You said you didn't need the text.
Well, the cell I saw it.
I have that.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna give them that since this is the organization's. Yeah, so whatever you think. Did I read that?
Who else can just...
The day. Yeah.
I think that's a better.
Hey.
Yeah, I think that's a better.
Yeah, I think that's a better.
Yeah.
Is he coming? Yeah.
Yeah, he usually comes in.
He buries. He helps you answer the questions.
Say he buries. He'll help you answer the questions, 'cause I count.
How'd you get the shorts?
Chief ass. He swore to me there was nothing controversial tonight, and this would be really fast.
Really, really. We'll have a few presentations.
I'm here now, so.
Should go quickly.
Did he?
He said I was...
He feels like that.
Mary first.
This is real old cards.
Come on, Jack.
I think he goes in my book or essential.
Actually, I've got him started.
I always have a picture.
I think he would work with anybody for this.
Good seeing you, brother.
Good seeing you.
Well, he didn't lose that.
He fights.
He's not bothered.
How are you?
Yeah, thank you so much. Thank you.
You're welcome.
You know, we have a first responders program. It's heaven forbid when these people get injured or killed in the line of duty.
Really? Okay.
Do it for somebody.
Okay, thank you, yeah.
We appreciate it.
Yeah, we'll definitely look into it.
Just contact me.
Yeah, will do. I appreciate it, John.
Yeah. That also goes to the hard ones.
I'll pass the word.
It's last year's meeting.
How y'all doing?
How are you?
Well, as far as I know.
They kept looking sharp as a tack. You're a good person, I agree.
We do, yeah.
All right. We ain't going red here.
Yeah.
Hi.
He is. Uh, yeah, we were all a little worn out after Monday. Yeah.
They had eleven, eleven, eleven days. Oh, that's true.
Yeah, they were really happy with the way it went here, though. Yeah, we're gonna debrief, I think, later this week about it, just to go over a few things, but all in all, it went pretty well. There he is, and...
No, no, I just got on boots. I'll, uh, I'm pretty much free till D R D tomorrow.
Okay. I can do it then or before our solid waste meeting in the afternoon or something, either one.
I may just come over early.
Okay. Yes, that works.
Okay. Good, thank you. I had back there. I repeat. Been a guy in college. He was from Minnesota. Minnesota. Somebody. These are all... I told the mayor, I said, "Me and you need to make a presentation together next year." They gonna hurt me. I got one, thank you. Yeah. I appreciate it. Oh, I didn't eat. I didn't eat. I didn't eat. I didn't eat. Hey. By the way, I think I... You don't eat that. I don't, I don't, I don't like that. No.
He is. Uh, yeah, we were all a little worn out after Monday. Yeah.
They had eleven, eleven, eleven days. Oh, that's true. Look at this, this is all that was made for us.
Yeah, they were really happy with the way it went here, though. Yeah, we're gonna debrief, I think, later this week about it, just to go over a few things, but all in all, it went pretty well.
Over there, great disease.
There he is, and...
No, no, I just got on boots. I'll, uh, I'm pretty much free till D R D tomorrow.
Okay. I can do it then or before our solid waste meeting in the afternoon or something, either one.
I may just come over early.
Okay. Yes, that works.
Okay. Good, thank you. I had back there. I repeat. Been a guy in college. He was from Minnesota. Minnesota. Somebody. These are all... I told the mayor, I said, "Me and you need to make a presentation together next year." They gonna hurt me. I got one, thank you. Yeah. I appreciate it. Yeah. I got one, thank you. Yeah. Yeah. I got one, thank you. I will be back. Yeah.
Yeah.
I got one, thank you. Yeah. I'm gonna be back. I'll, uh, I'm pretty much free till D R D tomorrow.
Okay. I can do it then or before our solid waste meeting in the afternoon or something, either one.
I may just come over early.
Okay. Yes, that works.
Okay. Good, thank you. I had back there. I repeat. Been a guy in college. He was from Minnesota. Minnesota. Somebody. These are all... I told the mayor, I said, "Me and you need to make a presentation together next year." They gonna hurt me. I got one, thank you. Yeah. I got one, thank you. Yeah. I appreciate it. Yeah. I got one, thank you. Yeah. 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 I got one, thank you. Yeah. Yeah. I appreciate it. Oh, I didn't eat. I didn't eat. I didn't eat. I didn't eat. Hey. By the way, I think I... You don't eat that. I don't, I don't, I don't like that. No. Yeah. Yeah. I appreciate it. Oh, I didn't eat. I didn't eat. I didn't eat. Hey. By the way, I think I... You don't eat that. I don't, I don't, I don't like that. No. Yeah. I don't eat. I don't, I don't, I don't like that. No. Yeah. I don't eat. Yeah. I don't eat. 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 Thanks for watching TV. I thought I'd call it till then. I was trying to at least make the date as soon as I could.
Yeah. That's good. That's good. I don't see him yet, but if he doesn't come in, I can give him his stuff. How are you? I'm upset. Somebody's got a receipt. That's my spot.
He's looking great. But I... I was... I did, I did. Yeah. I don't know what you did wrong.
Couldn't, yeah, well, couldn't think of an excuse quick enough, and you're a ham, so. I know. I think Bottom got another... He had a better excuse. Yeah, yeah.
Can I have one?
I'm learning, I'm learning, good, so bear with me.
Yes, and it's both, it's both sides. Well, uh... Well, they... It's terrible. It's terrible. It's terrible. It's terrible. It's terrible. It's terrible. No. No. Yes, and it's both, it's both sides. Well, uh... Well, they... It's terrible. It's terrible. It's terrible. It's disgusting. 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 Well... I'll get some, I'll get some. We... Yeah. We're... Oh, I...
I haven't seen him yet.
What is it? I'm not... I'm gonna take you to go forward, take you to... I'm gonna... I'm gonna... I'll be going there. I'm Christian. I'm Christian. I'm Christian. We're down there. About the Lord, I kept that two months. So now I didn't get out of nothing. Maybe he's getting there today. What's called is, uh... First, we're gonna have the indication. I asked you... Well, I... Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we remember this week all who have served this country in the Armed Forces. We remember and we thank you for their sacrifices, sacrifices of their lives, their time and their energy. Lord, continue to bless the veterans of this country. In addition, you placed men and women in positions of authority and leadership and have blessed them with gifts of service and wisdom. Guide the people in this room in their use of their gifts and in their service to you. We implore you this evening to be present at this meeting and grant your grace and your wisdom to the fine men and women who are serving the city of Cape Girardeau as they provide safety and justice in accordance with your will. We ask all these things in the name of your Son, Jesus Christ, and by the power of your Holy Spirit. Amen. Amen. Let us pray. 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 Thank you. Thank you. Let us pray. 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 First, with the recognition of responders to the recent plane crash at Cape Girardeau Regional Airport. There's, uh... Did you get up to Bill Molliver? No, I thought Molliver's coming. I'll just, I'll read this. What? I'm gonna bring him up. Okay. Bruce. Boy. Rand Tartabini. Robert Kahn. Brooks Shahery and Leanne Smith from Cardinal Glennon in St. Louis. Joe Wayne. An E M P from Cardinal Glennon. Paul Salmon. Kyle Campbell. Katrina Amos. We got a couple, I think, that are not present tonight. Jim Fount, Timmy Brown are not here. Is that true? That's true. Okay. On October 9th, 2018, a very unfortunate incident occurred at Cape Girardeau Regional Airport. A small two-seater plane crashed at approximately 11:00 a.m. Two occupants in the plane, Pilot Lowell Peterson and passenger Jack Mayner, suffered grave injuries in the crash. Calls were placed to 911 and police fire and emergency medical personnel were on their way, but immediately upon impact, airport personnel and others at the airport demonstrated the utmost bravery and rushed to provide aid and assistance to Lowell and Jack. These people courageously set their own safety aside to render aid to those in need. They risked their lives and went above and beyond to help an unimaginable situation. Others dutifully managed to keep airport operations running smoothly in the midst of the emergency, which in itself is no small feat. These individuals went to work that Tuesday like any other day. Little did they know what would unfold that Tuesday morning. Unfortunately, Mr. Peterson did not survive. Mr. Mayner continues to recover and is doing well. These men and women who acted so courageously that day should be commended for their bravery and their willingness to help others, and we thank you and we recognize you. Mrs. Peterson and Jack are here with his wife and son, John. We thank you all very much. What? Okay, I understand, I understand that. Thank you, Bruce. I am changing this around a little tonight, 'cause we've got some guests here. The second item is a Purple Heart City proclamation for the Military Order of Purple Heart. And I'm gonna come down front. You want me to come down there? Uh, yeah, you can bring him up here. We have with us tonight John Diswood, who's commander for the Region Two for the Order of the Purple Heart, and Bryce Lockwood. Now, I'll read a little bit about the Purple Heart first. "Dowered to members of the Armed Forces of the United States who are wounded by an instrument of war in the hands of the enemy and pulled humously to the necks of kin in the name of those who have killed in action. It is specifically a combat declaration. Over 320,000 Purple Hearts were awarded for World War I. Well over a million for World War II. Over 118,000 for the Korean War. Over 350,000 for Vietnam. Almost 1,000 for the Persians Gulf Conflict and to date, well over 50,000 for Afghanistan and Iraq. The Military Order of the Purple Heart was formed in 1932 for the protection and mutual interest of all who have received this declaration. Few months ago, a local citizen, Joy Balk, called me and said, "Would our city be interested in being a Purple Heart City?" And I said, "Oh, it's a great recognition to honor those who've served, and I don't know why we couldn't." And she gave me some information, we did a little research, and I thanked her for bringing it to our attention with the help of some local businesses, with the VFW, with the Marine Corps League, the New Notable Club. We completed the signs, which are here. And MoDOT has agreed to install those at the entrance to our city. I have five of them. So I wanna thank Joy for bringing it to our attention. Uh, I wanna thank these gentlemen for being here tonight, but most of all, I wanna thank the Purple Heart recipients. Any here tonight? Besides this gentleman? Both of you both? Yes. We are going to do this again Sunday at Veterans Day. Uh, and it's gonna be a really neat deal. David Kendrell always organizes the thing at Veterans Day up on our Freedom Rock at Cape County Park, and it's, it's gonna be a neat deal there, too. It's gonna take a small village, but we're in conjunction with the city and the Joint Veterans Council, Marine Corps League. I invite everyone up there for a one-up of dedication and rededication of the Avenue of Flags and Memorial Plaza. Peter Kinder's gonna be our guest speaker. There might be some fireworks, some fantastic scene, some good stories, and food and beverage for you to hunt it as well. Lisa Goldfield and Smokey Brothers and First Missouri State Bank and the Plaza Tire, who's sponsoring it, of course. So thank you, Mayor. Thank you, gentlemen, for coming all the way from Springfield, both for Sunday. So, Mayor, uh... I'm gonna read this proclamation first and give this all to you. "Whereas the city council, the city of Cape Girardeau, and our surrounding community have great admiration and the utmost gratitude for all the men and women who have selflessly served their country and this community in the Armed Forces. And whereas veterans have paid the high price of freedom by leaving their families and communities and placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all. And whereas the contributions and sacrifices of the men and women who served in the Armed Forces have been vital to maintaining the freedoms and the way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas many men and women in uniform have given their lives while serving the Armed Forces. And whereas the citizens of our country have received the Purple Heart Medal as a result of being wounded while engaged in combat with enemy force, which is singular meritorious act of essential service. And whereas the city of Cape Girardeau seeks to remember and recognize those who are recipients of the Purple Heart Medal. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Bob Fox, Mayor of the City of Cape Girardeau, preserve. Do you hereby proclaim the city of Cape Girardeau be a Purple Heart City honoring the service and sacrifice of our nation's men and women in uniform wounded or killed by the enemy while serving to protect our freedom?" Gentlemen? Very much, Mayor. Thank you. And, uh, I just have a little speech about the Purple Heart also. That's great. I'm retired at this ministry, and I promise I can't talk over 40 minutes. (LAUGHING) The Purple Heart Medal, originally called the Badge of Military Merit, was created by General George Washington on August 7th, 1782. It was a cloth Purple Heart with a word "Merit" sewn on the front. It was awarded to three enlisted men for outstanding performance above and beyond the call of duty. This was the first time the enlisted soldier had received such an award. Before then, only officers were eligible to receive such honors. After the Revolutionary War, the Badge of Military Merit was not awarded again until Gerald Deppus McHarford authorized an updated version. The new design had the bust of George Washington, ony Purple Heart made of forged metal with the words "For Military Merit" engraved letters on the back. The Purple Heart Medal was then reinstated on 22 February, 1932 in honor of General Washington's 200th birthday. It is a medal no one seeks to obtain for their right mind. But it truly represents the high price we pay for our freedom. Only six tenths of 1% of the millions who have served in the U.S. military have received the Purple. Of that 1%, six tenths of 1%, 50% were awarded posthumously. The Military Order of the Purple Heart Department of Missouri would like to thank the city of Cape Girardeau, Mayor Fox, council, people of the city, for the proclamation and support. It is heartwarming to us to have the appreciation of your community for the sacrifices of Purple Heart recipients expressed in this meaningful way. Thank the ladies and gentlemen. Presenting the special recognition, Lord, for this prize at the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Your dedication and support honoring America's combat wounded veterans, becoming a Purple Heart City. This is presented by the Patriot Members Department in Missouri, from the City of the Purple Heart, USA. Appreciate that. Welcome. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Fix your hair. You want to take a picture? Yeah. We have heard. We now have one more proclamation. Activism Against Gender Violence. Whereas the citizens of this community, we recognize the worldwide problem of violence against women occurs even here in Cape Girardeau. And whereas gender violence is traumatic to the body, the mind, the spirit, and can prevent people from being fully active participants at home and in the world. And whereas gender violence devastates relationships, families, communities, workplaces, schools, neighborhoods, villages, cities, and towns. And whereas gender violence costs the nation billions of dollars annually in medical expenses, police and court costs, shelters and foster care, sick leave, absenteeism, and non-productivity. And whereas, in spite of some progress, we need only look at our newspapers or watch a television newscast to see the unfortunate truth that gender violence has not yet been eliminated here around the world. And whereas we support the efforts of individuals and organizations, such as the Zonta Club of Cape Girardeau, to raise awareness, stimulate discussion, and advocate for local solutions that will curb gender violence. And whereas the Zontians stand in solidarity with thousands of others from around the world to assert that the right of women and men to be free of violence is a fundamental human right. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Bob Fox, Mayor of the City of Cape Girardeau, do hereby proclaim the 16 days between International Day to Eliminate Violence Against Women on November 15th, 2018, and International Human Rights Day on December 10th, 2018, as the 16 Days of Activism Against Gender Violence in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. And I call upon the citizens and civic organizations to support, work to end gender violence and eliminate the detrimental consequences of gender violence that has on the well-being of our community. Thank you. If you don't want to have your head in every picture. Mic's right there if you want to do it.
My name is Tanya Wells, and I'm the Advocacy Committee Chair for the Zonta Club of Cape Girardeau, and we thank you for your recognition and your support of the 16 Days of Activism. Um, Zonta Club of Cape Girardeau is part of Zonta International, and our sole mission is to empower women through service and advocacy. And most of you are probably familiar with a great many of the projects that the local Zonta Club takes, um, charge of, such as the Women of Achievement Luncheon, which is only in a few more days next week, um, offering scholarships, financial support to nonprofit organizations, and really anything, uh, that seeks to advocate for women. As the Advocacy Committee Chair, we work with our local legislators to advocate on any gender-based, uh, issues. Uh, we have, uh, several offerings for women in the community to get together and talk about those issues, uh, to brainstorm any ideas that we can put forth so that we can do a better job of empowering women through service and advocacy. And we thank you very much for your proclamation this evening.
Thank you. We now have a, uh, presentation on employee health and dental insurance renewal. Lori Meyer. Lori?
Thank you. That's some tough acts to follow there. Uh, I'm Lori Meyer, Human Resources and Risk Manager for the city. Good evening, Mayor and Council. As provided in your agenda packets, it's that, uh... As provided in your agenda packets, it's that time of year again where we're looking at our renewal, our annual renewal for our employee health and dental benefits. So with me this evening is David Johnson, Senior Consultant with CVIS, and he's going to get into more of the details of the proposal on the renewal. So I want to thank him for being here and for his continued professional service and taking care of our account. We have another year of good news when it comes to shopping the market and providing our employees with the best benefits that we can. So many thanks on behalf of the city for David being here. So I'd like to introduce David Johnson.
Good evening. I will talk very briefly about the two programs that are renewing now, the dental plan and the medical plan. Both plans are running very well. Both plans are self-funded plans, which simply means that at the beginning of the plan year, we, or rather you, set rates that you charge either to employees or you pay for each individual on the plan, and through the year, claims are paid out of that fund. At the end of the year, if claims are lower than expected, then you keep that money. If claims are higher than expected, there's both an individual as well as an overall stop-loss, we call that, you pay a fee for that insurance. For the last two years, the plans have run very well. Last year, there was a very minor increase, less than, it was less than a percent. And this year, with the medical plan specifically, there's really, there's no increase again, and it's actually a slight decrease. So the, there will be no plan changes in terms of benefits to the employees, so it's all the same deductibles, coinsurance, network of providers, et cetera. Today, again, as I was talking about with the self-funded plan, you pay claims out of this fund up through, actually up through August, your claim payment has been about 78% of expected through August. So that's very good, obviously. So again, you keep that money if you don't spend that money through the year. There are going to be some changes within the plan. There are really four or five expenses that make up those premiums. The lion's share of that is our claims. And actually, the insurance company has dropped that expected paid claim number just a little bit this year, about a couple of percent. They have also dropped the administrative expense of the plan just slightly. We're going to reallocate some of that expense to claim expense, so that should even out in the end. And then the one true increase is for stop-loss. You have an individual stop-loss point of $150,000, so that if any individual claim, any claim on an individual goes over $150,000, the insurance company pays for that on their own. That doesn't come back to your fund, you don't have to pay for that. So that expense traditionally goes up 15 to 20% a year. It's around 5 to 7% of the overall expense of the plan, so overall, it's very low impact. So again, plan staying the same, because you set your rates, or rather administration sets rates, we've decided to leave those rates the same for this year, and the plan's performing very well. Be happy to answer any questions on that, or if you go through the dental plan a little bit first, and then we can answer questions on everything. The dental plan is also a self-funded plan. Excuse me. The medical plan, I should say, is with Anthem Insurance Company of Missouri. The dental plan is with Delta Dental of Missouri. It's a very large network of providers available. There is a slight increase in the administrative fee this year for the first time in a couple of years, and that actual increase is going to be less, going to work out to be less than $1,000 for the year as a whole. We're going to make a couple of changes to the plan this year, or would like to, would propose to make a couple of changes to the plan. One would be to implement what we call a passive preferred provider organization, and that simply means that Delta Dental has contracted with a more limited number of dentists for a more narrow network. And because it's a narrow network, there are bigger discounts with those particular providers. The plan of benefits will remain the same, but if an employee happens to utilize one of those providers contracted to that smaller network, there will be lower fees in terms of claims, in terms of claims to the plan that the city would pay for, or in terms of if an employee has a filling, as an example, that cost would be lower, their percentage that they would pay for that filling would be lower. So it should develop savings for both the plan as well as employees. If all of the claims are the same next year, the insurance company estimates about a 4% savings. The other proposed change is to begin to cover implants. Now, I will tell you, I am an insurance specialist, I don't know a lot about teeth, but the implant has become a rather cumbersome issue to deal with, the way, the way implants are replaced and bridges and so forth. The insurance company has realized over the last couple of years, it's become so complicated, employees kind of get caught in the middle of it. So what they're proposing is that you pay for implants, just a slight increase to the plan, be about 1 and 1/2% to the overall plan expected. So it should be, it's better coverage, it pays for a full implant as opposed to bridges or other things to cover that particular tooth, and it gets the employee out of the middle of an argument between the provider. So overall, again, other than the passive PPO, which is a benefit to employees and a benefit to the city, and the implant increase, all other benefits would stay the same, provider networks would stay the same, and rates will stay the same as well. So overall, two, really several years in a row of very good claims experience help you, two really good years in a row with very low increases or no increases at all, so very happy with the way the plans are moving. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Just real general, you mentioned at the beginning, the city gets to bank, I guess, the unclaimed money. Is there a time limit on that, or just as long as we have the, that plan?
Generally, the providers have a, the providers have a time limit as to when they can submit claims on behalf of employees, and that's usually about nine months after the fact. So is your, if some, generally, they're not going to let it go that long because they want to get their money before that, but generally, it takes one to three months to get all those claims paid. So you're, but you've been in the plan long enough that you're what we call a mature plan, so you're rolling along very well, but it's guaranteed for any claims incurred, the stop-loss, both the individual and the aggregate, as we call it, the overall, is for, for the contract year of 2018, and the renewal will be for the contract year of 19, which is January 1 to December 3. So any claims paid in those timeframes will be protected in those timeframes. And then if they're paid in the next year, they'd be protected then.
In other words, though, yeah, but the, being able to bank that money doesn't go on for five, I mean, our account wouldn't?
Yes. At the end of the year, actually, two or three months after the end of the year, we always try to do an accounting to make sure, okay, this is what, this is what theoretically the city would have paid in, and employees would have paid in for their coverage, and this is the expense of the plan, and so this is where you ended up at the end of the year. So we try to do an accounting so we understand exactly where you are. Now, you also maintain reserves to pay for incurred but not recorded claims if and when you cancel with a particular insurance company. So if you were to decide tonight, we're going to cancel effective December 31st, there is a reserve that's already established, John's established it, and he looks at that every year to make sure that stays up with claim increases. And if and when you were to cancel, there's money in the bank to pay all those runoff claims that have been incurred that haven't been paid yet. Make sense? Yes, sir.
The dental plan, we're not limiting where they can go, we're just discounting specific ones.
It's different than a traditional PPO plan, exactly. That's why we call it passive, meaning if you happen to go to that dentist, then you're going to get a better, the plan will get a better rate, and the employee will get a discount. So what we're going to do is communicate to employees, if you happen to use these particular dentists, it's going to benefit the plan, and it's going to benefit you in terms of any expenses you would incur, but if you, you can still go to wherever you want. Delta's a little different, they really have, there are three different categories. One is dentists that are not in their program at all, and that's generally less than 5% of the dentists in the state. Then they have about 95% of the dentists in their premier network, and then they, in their PPO network, it's down to 30 to 40%, I think. And actually, you have a lot of people that are utilizing those PPO dentists already. I think of the top 50, it was, it was almost all of them. So that's going to really benefit them. But yeah, if they want to, if they want to continue going where they're going, it's the same benefit as last year, or as this year.
I think you just answered my question because it was about the passive PPO as well. So it's, you said it's small, but on the whole, for the city, the...
Pretty good participation.
Okay. So there wouldn't be any reason to go, to try and go exclusively to the passive PPO?
No, I think, this is actually a newer program that Delta has done. They recognize us having the largest network, and so this is a positive. They came to us and said, hey, we've got this passive network, let's implement it. If people happen to use those providers, you're going to get the discount for that.
We've tried to, in working with employees, give them choice, make them informed. What we find is when we do that, that they make good choices, but they, but they feel empowered to have the choice, and that, and that's, that really works, I think, best for everybody. And it's showing up, you know, because they are making good choices, and they're taking care of themselves, and then we have the, the, our wellness activities are all paying off. Now then, tomorrow, we can have three people have a, you know, a bad, bad event in their life, and things can go really bad, but...
No, we can't have that, we don't want that.
Just a general question, though, on that passive PPO, you said the rates are, the claims are less.
Should be lower, yes.
Is there an average percentage that they're cheaper than?
So, Delta projected, based on what you, what you've incurred for the last rolling 12 months, they would expect you to save 4% next year.
So that's for the, okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions, David? All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much, we appreciate your business.
Lori, thank you too.
Thanks.
Before I get into communications and reports, I've got one other item here to, that I want to read, and first I want to have Nicolette stand up, if she would. Ms. Nicolette Brennan. I want to take this opportunity to commend you on the creation, the implementation, and success of the inaugural 2018 Citizens Academy Program. Because of your time and dedication, the participants were provided an excellent opportunity to learn about the various aspects of the city and interact with all the city departments. You gave the participants firsthand information of how and why all departments operate together and an overview of the culture of our city. As a direct result of the Citizens Academy Program, the city has seen an increase in the number of citizens interested in serving on city advisory boards and taking on leadership roles in the community. The participations have a greater appreciation and understanding of the many functions and services of the city of Cape Girardeau. We are privileged to have such a highly trained and dedicated person serving as the public information face of the city. Your hard work and dedication are recognized and greatly appreciated. Congratulations on a job well done. We'll now get into communications and reports. Council, anybody got anything? I know Shelley does.
Okay. I had the opportunity to go Florida, Orlando, Florida, okay, anyway, and I got a chance to see the community come together. There were people from all walks of life there, city officials, bankers, citizens from every state almost was there, and they were sharing their, their stories on how they became part of Purpose Build and why they became a part of it, which was very profound because there was tearing, crying, and all kinds of stuff, just, the people were just elated to be there. And they came in, and I saw that how that they became one voice, you know, and they didn't meet a stranger, and even though they were there representing a particular neighborhood, they became one. And I was fascinated with the speakers, they had experience, and this one lady, she was a banker, and she thought that her mindset was, that's the way it is, that's just the way it is. And somebody came, somebody, I don't, I think it was a lift, but they came to her, and they began to tell her the story and the plight of the neighborhoods in her city, and she took a drive to the area, and that's where she just broke down and started crying. And one of the statements that they consistently made was, suffering is not meant to be a permanent state. And that, that related with me because I feel like, you know, we are at a place in our lives, especially in this city, that we must make sure that we include everybody, and everyone has the opportunity, whether they take it or not, they have the opportunity to improve their lives. All cultures was there, walking from every, I met so many people, I got so many business cards, and it was just a beautiful thing to go to. The quarterbacks worked hard to make sure that the people, the quarterbacks are the ones that bring the people together, tell the story of the neighborhoods because they lived in the neighborhoods. So they were able to tell you just how bad it really was. And so I felt like Cape Girardeau would be greatly benefited from it if we would just come together as citizens and look at the plight of the people, look at the haves and the have-nots, look at the need and, and see, can you come up with an idea that would help make things change and improve the lives of others? That's what Purpose Build was all about. It's not about, it's not about anything other than improving lives that don't have the same advantages of us. It was a wonderful, it was a one, I would go again, I'm telling you, just, just send me, I'll go. November 16th, right. We have in a movie that, yeah, CMO, and everybody is invited to that movie, okay? It's telling the story of War II, and it's, they, we came up with this porch initiative because everybody that told the story mentioned the front porch when we were young and how the neighbors took care of us and how they washed over us, and we was playing it in their yard, and we was coming to their house and eating in their house. And, but it was always this front porch that the old people sat on, we thought they was old then. And now I'm one of them, you know, so please come out to it. I think you're going to really enjoy what they said, how they felt, and where they're at in their hearts. We had old people like cop school and things like that, it's going to be a good, I think it's going to be really good, you know, so just come, tell your friends, I've been walking into all the grocery stores, and anybody I see, I tell them about it, you know, I don't have to know your name, I just, you know, I'm claiming you. So come out and be a part of that, and then you'll probably learn more once you get there than what I'm saying, but I'm just, I was just overwhelmed with Purpose Build and the many, 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 many cities that was there being represented, big ones and small. So that's all.
Your own quarterback group is going to have a meeting, and they're going to tell how to apply Purpose Build to Cape Girardeau.
True.
So they're going to show the film, but then the quarterbacks are going to tell that.
Right.
You won't want to miss it.
It's going to be at...
Six to eight, November 16th.
Friday, November 16th, at the River Campus Convocation Center. Six o'clock. Got it? Stacy?
Yes, well, changing gears a little bit, it's spaghetti day tomorrow, sorry. This is a benefit for the Cape Parks and Rec Foundation, their largest fundraiser of the year, so it's a great day for the foundation. Just encouraging everyone to stop by for some spaghetti. It's at the Arena Building from 11 to 7, so swing on by, you can get orders to go. Grab some spaghetti for your family.
And they deliver, too.
And they deliver, too. Yes.
How about that?
It's a big deal.
That's a big deal.
So.
Big deal.
Everybody come.
I've got a couple, a couple items, just really quickly, just sort of bridging off of what Shelley just talked about, I've been thinking about how do you inspire more municipal... I've been thinking about how do you inspire more municipal interaction with citizens? And I started thinking about whether or not we as a council would think it pertinent to actually require our advisory boards to have at least one representative from each of our wards. And so I wanted to toss that out there, see what anybody thought about that because I think it might be a neat way to inspire people that may have never thought that they would be on a municipal advisory board to apply, complete the application, and then go into consideration. So I wanted to hear everybody else's thoughts on that.
We are now trying to keep track of people who, number one, have attended the Citizens Academy. And at the same time, what ward they live in, when they apply for a position on a advisory board. And we're taking that in consideration. And I don't think it's a mandate that you have to have a person for every ward on every council. But we need to have more representation from around the city on our advisory boards. And, and we're trying to get that accomplished.
Yeah, I know that, I think a lot of times the advisory boards end up sort of getting packed with some, just a select couple of wards. I, I think, I know Shelley has a hard time, they have a hard time getting people engaged with advisory boards. I also know in Ward One, we have a hard time getting people engaged in advisory boards. And so it'd just be really great to see that representation on those boards.
It would. It would.
And then in addition to that, I just have one other thing. And, you know, we think about visitors coming to Cape Girardeau all the time from Highway 55. We think about visitors coming by the airport. Just the other day, I looked out my window of my house and I saw four very large canoes going down the Mississippi River. And, yeah, we always forget that we have visitors out, other than visitors on riverboats. We have visitors by water. And I was able to actually run down to the Red Star Access. I met up with this group. It was a group of students from Augsburg University in Minneapolis, Minnesota. They are doing what's called a semester on the river. And so they are actually canoeing from St. Louis down to the head of passes outside of New Orleans. You should have seen it. They had these huge, beautiful canoes, that polished wood, you know, just beautifully built canoes with these large, I guess, formed solar panels that draped over them. They were all in great spirits when they arrived in the Red Star neighborhood. And they had actually hooked up with the local church where they were going to spend the night. And they had already had a nice display of hospitality here in Cape. And so it was really a fantastic thing. They all just hopped out of those, out of those canoes like they had never been paddling, so.
I saw Pete Poe this morning, who happened to be down there about the time two of those canoes were coming in. And he said, have you ever seen a canoe that holds eight people? And I said, what? He took a picture of it and showed me a picture of it. It's humongous. I mean, it's, it's got to be 20 feet long.
Mm-hmm. It's amazing. They were huge. They were absolutely massive.
They're wooden.
Yeah.
And, I mean, they're beautiful. They're just works of art.
Semester on the river.
Semester on the river. I mean, I just, I was blown away by that. And then the fact that they were all in such great spirits was even fantastic.
They use the solar panels to recharge their cell phone.
Recharge their cell phone, yeah.
As they go down the river. That's what they're for.
I asked them all their majors and they had communications majors and business majors and rec and ecology. I mean, those students participate in that from all across that institution.
That's great.
So just a unique, a unique traveler's story in Cape Girardeau.
We may need to start doing billboards along the-
Along the river.
That's something. Thank you, Dan. Bobby?
No.
No? Anybody else?
Can I, can I just add on to what Dan was talking about before regarding the boards? I, I can see maybe how mandating, you know, somebody from every ward might not work. But on the other hand, I do think it has merit in terms of the city actually encouraging and being proactive, more, perhaps more so than we, than we have been in terms of finding people.
Well, the other thing I'd like you to do, each of you, to go back to your wards and think of people who you think would be good candidates to attend our next Citizens Academy, which starts in February.
I believe it's full.
Is it full? It's full already? Okay. Well, we're going to, we're going to try to do this twice a year. So if you've got people that, in your ward you think might be interested, we'll get them on the list and expand that program.
Then we can, we can look at doing a flyer maybe and some other avenues of trying to get, I know we do social media to try to get more people to put into the board, but maybe there's some flyers we can give you all to, to hand out in your wards and help engage more. We are going to, in our reports, we just talked about this at staff meeting, we are going to start listing the, the candidates and what ward they're in. Whether or not they pretend to have completed the Citizens Academy or if they're signed up. And then we'll also try to list the, where the, the amount in each ward for the, for the advisory board when we put it in front of you as well. So that way you'll at least be informed of what, what the current makeup is and what are the opportunities to change that.
And also I think that in order to know, you know, like, in order to know what a person like, what a, like for instance, I'll say this, but I, I like rice, but I don't like sugar on my rice, okay? Somebody else like rice, they like sugar on their rice. But every time that they come around me, I'm giving them my rice, the way I eat it. They would never, you would never, I would never understand how they feel every time I turn around, I'm serving you my type of rice and the way I like to eat it. And I think that once we all come together and learn from each other, it'll balance out the, the schisms and the things that we come, we go through as a community. So that's one of the reasons I am very adamant about trying to get them on so they know what's going on. And you, and then the individuals on these committees, they'll make better decisions versus it being lopsided, okay?
Excellent.
Yeah.
Excellent. Good. Uh, anybody else?
Victor, were you busy this last week?
Victor's been a busy man.
It was political. I wasn't going to bring it up.
Well, I thank you for organizing our visit to the Trump rally. And it's not always a pleasant thing to have to reschedule a city council meeting, but it's not very often you have a President of the United States come to your city either. And I felt like that any of us who wanted to have a chance to go there and be at that rally ought to have that chance and exercise that right. It was, it was a superb crowd, outstanding exposure for our community. And I have to say, I, you know, thanks to Chief Ennis and Chief Blair, who's not here tonight, for, for all of the organization, the things they had to do with their staff and help organize other staff that came to help throughout this whole process and work in conjunction with the Secret Service to get this done. And I know they had to plan for, for every scenario that might happen because there are crazy people out there in the world. And when it just goes really smooth, you wonder why we do all that. But then you think about it afterwards and if something had gone wrong, it would, it'd been disastrous if they weren't trained and prepared. It, it really went off without a hitch. There was one instance, I know where some of you have heard of. We had a, there was a person who, I think, fainted because they were on their feet a long time. And the president was talking and just stopped dead in his tracks. Says, is there a doctor in the house? Is there paramedics? And they got there very quickly as they made their way, they had to mushroom through the crowd that was just like this. But it was, it was, was there? Outside? Yeah, there was. There was just inside. She happened outside and they took her inside.
How many?
There were a total of eight.
Eight? We treated eight?
One, one was transported, the other seven were treated by ARBs and CCPA people on the scene.
Well, it was really touching during all of this thing that, that the president stopped and asked for people to pray. And then all of a sudden, they start singing Amazing Grace. It was, it was very touching.
And he also praised the first responders.
Yes, he did. Yep. So thank you all for helping and make all this possible.
And staying in public works in his general duty.
Well, everybody, everybody pulled together to, to do this. It was a, it was a community-wide effort and we thank you all. Uh, as far as my report, I had a, I've been to a simple meeting, a magnet meeting. We had a qual, aquatics facility meeting today. And kind of went over the site matrix and talked about those things that we're using to, to pick the site. We're going to lower those from 10 or 11 sites to maybe four or five and whittle them down and, and move on the process. We're having, uh, we went over the survey that went out to 900. We had 900 and something responses to the survey, which was excellent. I mean, fantastic for, for a short period. We talked about the results of that today. Darren is coming back next week on Tuesday. We've got another short meeting. He's going to present some of the marking, marketing issues. And then they want to have a meeting in conjunction with the school board so they can kind of keep track of what's going on. And then we'll just go from there. We had an MML regional meeting in Jackson last week. Some of us were there. And Molly did a great job of presenting on the concept of design build. We thank her for that. I went to the Jeff City last week for the, to meet with the Gaming Commission to testify on behalf of Isle Casino and the relicensing process. Welcome the Rotary State Convention here. Last week, the Missouri High School Athletic Association volleyball championships were here. Welcome them to the city. We had two great ribbon cuttings. MRV Bank opened their new branch. And the courtyard by Marriott opened downtown. And it is a beautiful, beautiful facility. So we, we were really glad to have that. And do the, I mean, they opened last week and Thursday and Friday night, I think they were sold out. I talked to people, I talked to people at the, from Missha, the volleyball tournament, and they said it was, two of them said it was the most beautiful hotel they'd ever stayed in. And that's a great compliment. And I told them that yesterday, or Friday when we were there, or Saturday, I mean. I was asked too to say something about spaghetti day tomorrow. So don't forget spaghetti day. And if you don't want to eat there, you can take it to Go and they will deliver. So remember that. Don't forget the Veterans Day Celebration Sunday. It's at, begins about 12:30 at Cape County Park North. And also don't forget that our next meeting on the 19th, we will meet at four o'clock before the meeting starts to hear the report on, have a little study session on the study that has been made on City Hall and some of the buildings that, that we've got. So a lot going on. And don't forget next Friday night, the 16th, is the Purpose Built thing at the River Campus. That's all I've got. You don't have to talk too much tonight. I told him I wouldn't let him talk too much. Is there anything else?
Nope, I don't have anything else.
Okay. That was good. Uh, agenda review. Do you want to do that? You want to have Eric do that?
I'll try to do it and get through it since, rather than surprising him on it. So we'll, we don't have any public hearings tonight. And we will have appearances for items listed on the agenda. The consent agenda consists of, item number two is the second, third reading of the municipal agreement with MoDOT for work on the Bill Emerson Memorial Bridge. Number three is a resolution awarding the contract for cement finishing for sidewalk point repair. Number four is a agreement that we have with Simo Drug Task Force handling of their money. It was a requirement that we have an agreement with them. So that gives them the proper auditing and things with, with the, any funds that they take in. And so we'll take care of that. It's minor amounts and minor amount of workforce. So we're just going to take it and do it for the, for the group. Five and six, you've already heard about from our, our broker about dental and our healthcare. It's a great tribute to our employees who, who are being healthier and managing their healthcare better. And so we win twice that way. We have healthier employees and we have less use of our plan. So that's good. Number seven is the performance agreement with River West Partners for Walden Park Four. Number eight is the license indemnity agreement for the Zickfields on an awning along Main Street. Number nine is another awning on Themis for the Abbots. And then number 10 is the sanitary sewer extension for Stone Crest. Are there any of these items you'd like to remove from the consent agenda? If not, there are four new ordinances. The first one is establishing stop signs on Nieman Drive. Number 12 is record plat for Walden Park Phase Four. 13 is record plat for Lil Mac subdivision out off of La Salle. And 14 is amendment number three to the block grant agreement out at the airport with the Highway Transportation Commission. And then under other business, we have an item to set our regular city council meetings for the next calendar year. I believe there are two that are adjusted to be on a Tuesday rather than a Monday. Any items you'd like to discuss further? We will have closed session tonight. Have a couple of items. We'll hear about that in a few rounds.
Okay. Are there any appearances tonight for any item that is not on the agenda? Anybody here to talk about anything that's not on the agenda this evening? If not, I'll call a regular session to order. We'll have roll call.
Here.
Bob Fox.
Here.
Robbie Guard.
Here.
Victor Gunn.
Here.
Stacy Kinder.
Here.
Shelley Moore.
Here.
Dan Preston.
Here.
All present, I'll entertain motion to adopt the agenda.
Some move.
Motion by Mr. Guard, seconded by Shelley. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Are there any public hearings this evening? Are there any individuals who want to make comments about items listed on the agenda this evening? Any public comment, any comment on any item that's on the agenda? If not, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Eric?
Bill number 18 dash 147, an ordinance authorizing city manager to execute municipal agreement with Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for bridge work on the Bill Emerson Memorial Bridge in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. An ordinance authorizing city manager to execute municipal agreement with Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for bridge work on the Bill Emerson Memorial Bridge in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Number 18 dash 150, a resolution authorizing city manager to execute an agreement with Lopey Cement Finishing, Inc. for sidewalk point repair 2018 project in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Number 18 dash 151, a resolution authorizing city manager to execute fiduciary agreement on behalf of the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri for the Cape Girardeau Police Department and the Southeast Missouri Drug Task Force. Number 18 dash 154, a resolution authorizing city manager to execute a contract with Delta Dental for employee dental insurance services in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Number 18 dash 155, a resolution authorizing city manager to execute a contract with Anthem Boot Cross for employee health insurance services in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Number 18 dash 156, a resolution authorizing city manager to execute performance guarantee agreement with River West Partners, LC, for Walden Park Phase Four in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Number 18 dash 161, a resolution authorizing city manager to execute license and indemnity agreement with Zona M. Zickfield Trust for the installation of an awning at 25, 27, 29 North Main Street in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Number 18 dash 159, a resolution authorizing city manager to execute license and indemnity agreement with Reba Abbott for installation of an awning at 110 Themis Street in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri.
Thank you, Eric. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion by Dan. Do I hear a second? Second by Stacy. Any discussion?
Mayor, please mark my vote in number seven and abstention due to financial conflict of interest.
Anything else? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. New ordinances. Bill number 18 dash 153, an ordinance admitting schedule C of section 26 dash 121 of the city code by establishing stop signs on Nieman Drive in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri.
Some move.
Motion by Mr. Guard, seconded by Stacy. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 18 dash 157, an ordinance approving a record plat of Walden Park Phase Four. Motion by Ryan, seconded by Dan. Any discussion?
Mayor, please mark my vote in abstention due to financial conflict of interest.
Okay, that's on item number 12. Any discussion? Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 18-158, an ordinance approving the record plat of Lilmac East Second subdivision. Motion by Dan, seconded by Stacy. All those in, any discussion? If not, all those signify, in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Bill number 18-160, an ordinance authorizing city manager to execute Amendment Three, the state block grant agreement with Missouri Highway Transportation Commission for design and construction of the runway 10-28 lighting rehabilitation project at the Cape Girardeau Regional Airport. Motion by Shelley, seconded by Stacy. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have another item in other business to set regular city council meetings for the 219 calendar year. And has everybody looked at those dates? There are two dates. And, I didn't write it down. January 21st is Martin Luther King Day. We'll change that meeting to the next day on Tuesday, January 22nd. Monday, September 2nd is Labor Day. We'll change that to Tuesday, September 3rd. So I'll entertain a motion. We accept the calendar for 219 meeting. Motion by Mr. Guard, seconded by Stacy.
I'm sorry, I'm afraid I don't have an answer to that.
Mine does that, too. Thank you, Siri. That wasn't you? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, and then I'll read the closed session. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We adjourn. We do need to have a closed session specifically to discuss legal actions and litigation, confidence and communication with legal counsel, and property transactions pursuant to RS Missouri Section 610-021, 1, 2, and 3. Motion by Mr. Guard. Seconded by Shelley. We will adjourn to closed session.